Good evening, everyone. This is Tuesday, June the 6th, 2023. It is 6:00 PM. That clock is about 30 seconds behind. I will call the Town of South Tullough Board of Mayor and Alderman Meeting to order. If you all please stand for indication. Alderman Carter, will you give an indication for?
Dear heaven, Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the community that we live. Dear heaven, you Father, just be with us. We pray that the things that we do here in this town will be accordance to thy will. And all things, dear heaven, Father, if thy will not our will be done. Christ may my prayer be.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Together we hold the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as it is. May be seated. I call the Row.
I'm doing good.
Oh, Row, I'm sitting back here right in front of you.
I call the Row.
You want me to move?
Alderman Carter.
Here.
Alderman Wood.
Here.
Alderman Morgan.
Here.
Alderman Maynard.
Here.
Okay, Alderman Reeves will be joining us just a little bit late today. He called in, he just got behind on his schedule a little bit. Let the record reflect that we do have a quorum here with us this evening. First item of business, well, let me just mention, of course, today indeed, June 6th, 1944. So this flag behind me and that flag that you see flying at the ramp that we have recently updated with our maintenance and others, we are thankful for those that store nority to give us that freedom and privilege to be able to fly that flag here in South Tullough. So keep those people in your mind.
Do we have an agenda? I'm getting a copy of it.
Okay, you need a copy of an agenda?
Does anybody else need a copy in front of them? He goes to.
Do you have a copy? Okay. We'll pause for a second. For.
I don't think anybody's got one.
Don't have any? Okay.
Anybody?
Didn't come there, I'll check.
This should be your first name. Yeah, Nathan doesn't have one. I didn't get any of this stuff out.
Hey, Benito, I forgot to bring that flag, shall we? I'll show you that. That's what I've got.
You can wait, see.
No, I'm sorry.
I'm down.
It's a Tennessee state flag during the Civil War. It's a reproduction, but there's very few people who has any clue of that.
I don't know if I know what it looks like.
I'd like to see that.
I'll bring it down.
I might be specific. Here we go.
Yeah, it's.
Did you got a paper agenda?
It's pure Tennessee, I can tell you that right now.
Have she prepared it for you? My apologies for that. You'll see some handwritten notes on your agenda. That's my scribbled scrabble for tonight's meeting, so people can give us a moment. You should have some other documents in front of you. We'll go through the, if you don't have those, as we go through the meeting, make sure you let us know. I know some of you probably brought a package, some of you, we may have missed ours. Alderman Reeves, you're just in time.
He's on level five.
That's right.
I'm sorry.
I swear, we are printing the agenda. Please get that out.
Why are you here?
We all have an agenda.
I'll make this up to you.
I believe this was emailed out to you correct. Everybody did get emailed. Okay, make sure you had a chance to read over some things. All right, so back to where we were. The approval of the minutes, you have the minutes before you on your agenda. You have a recommend a motion for the approval of the minutes.
I'll make this up to you.
A motion by Alderman Morgan.
I second.
Seconded by Alderman Reeves. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for question. Alderman Reeves.
Yes, sir.
Alderman Maynard.
Yes.
Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Alderman Wood.
Yes.
Alderman Carter.
Yes.
Motion passes. Is there, are there any additions to the agenda by the Alderman? Any addition to the agenda?
Well, I mean, I got a couple of things.
Okay.
You mean, as far as the budget's concerned?
No, we're talking about anything to add to the agenda. So can you list, just list those items for now, and we'll come back to it. Alderman Maynard.
Yeah. Give me half a second here. Maybe it was about the budget. Well, no, I think we need to discuss July 4th. I don't know.
July 4th, you want to talk about that?
Yep, sure do.
July 4th, okay, we'll add that to the agenda. All right. Okay, any others? All right, we'll circle back around that momentarily. All right, so old business, we have a ordinance on the table, 2023-08 food truck. It was tabled with a first and second motion. We were in the phase of discussion, so we'll pick up there with any discussion about the ordinance. If you have questions or concerns or comments, we'll discuss that. You should have 2023-08. Everybody with us. Final call for any discussion.
We have wanted to, wait just one second. Give me just a minute here. Kind of out of order.
I think our, what was our question last month? Was about the location, I think about the special events?
Yeah, the location is not established within this ordinance. And the special events, if you read down through their, the permit requirements, that it exempts any permits for any special event. So anything we do regarding city activities or anything we determine as a cause of special event, the fee is waived. The only thing they have to do is register with the event holder to be able to participate. So like River Day, we have all these different vendors and food vendors. They basically sign a form saying they're coming and tell you what kind of food they're going to cook and things like that, and they are able to participate without any fee. Yeah.
Also, will that include any fundraisers? You know, a lot of times fire departments, even the county, they, they're, of course, aren't usually.
Yeah, yeah, anything that, well.
It is at the city limits.
Give an example for you, make sure we're talking about the same thing. So poker run, which is coming up at the end of July, that is a special event. So if the fire department wants to come down and do a fundraiser, they're exempt anyway. They're part of a city organization.
Okay, the county fire department does their barbecues, chickens and things like that.
Yeah, the county fire department would be exempt because they work for the county. These are privately owned food trucks is what this ordinance is pertaining to.
Okay. So it wouldn't be like for the church, they usually are at the poker run selling?
Yeah, if they sell at the poker run, they're exempt from any kind of fee.
They're exempt from any.
Now, River Day, I can't remember what the arrangements are at River Day, but I don't know, you might have to tell us all. Do y'all pay a fee at River Day to sell?
We do.
Okay, so they, everybody pays, that I understand, for River Day. So they would be under the church or civic organization classification, I think, on River Day, not necessarily a private vendor. So that's a little different thing. But what this ordinance does for the city is gives our police department an opportunity to help us monitor that. And such as somebody will roll into town, park on Main Street in four or five slots, block the spaces, just give the police department authority to say, look, we've got a food truck ordinance, you can't park here on the street, you got to have approval, you got to pay your fee, that kind of thing. So there's two fees in there. This is a annual fee, or there's a 30-day fee.
That's really gone, that was right, that was the, I remember that.
Yeah.
That was the concern. So by doing that, we can't have, unless it's a special event, really, it would prohibit any food trucks from coming.
That's not accurate.
Okay.
So what this.
Not on a special event now.
On a special event?
No, no, I'm saying if it's not a special event.
Okay, so what the ordinance says, if a food truck vendor would like to set up in town, they have to request a permit if they are using someone's private property. Okay, so the example I used last month was somebody knows, I think, Joe Brown, who has a lot on Main Street, got a little alcove there. All they have to do to set up at Joe Brown's lot is to have a letter that says Joe Brown has given them a permission to set up a food truck on his lot, and then they pay the city their permit fee, and they can sit there and sell all that. They can do it for 30 days, every day for 30 days, or they can get an annual permit for the whole year and set up when they want to. So it does not prevent anyone from doing business. It gives the city an opportunity to monitor who comes in, where they set up, all those kind of things. So let's just say Little Red, Little Red Shed, yeah, Little Red Shed. If they want a food truck to come to their business and sit in their parking lot and set up for anybody to come in off the street, typically what would happen for a food truck, they would get a letter of permission from the Patel's, and then they would pay their fee to the city, and then they set up a food truck. Now, I don't see them doing that because they run a restaurant, but the example is somebody that has a lot in a decent space. Let's just say a guy right over here where the, where the storage facility is. If he wants to give somebody permission to set up a food truck right there, they have to submit a letter, they have to have all those health permits and everything, and then they pay their fee to the city.
Is that, is that the norm for the towns, the smaller towns around Attlefield?
I don't know what the norm is for other places, but I do know this was recommended by other people at MTS that have dealt with food truck issues and tried to get some organization and oversight on food trucks. Any other discussion or question?
So we're not, the town's not going to have a place that if we're charging them $250 for a year, we're not going to have a place allotted for them to be able to sell.
Well, as of right now, this ordinance does not identify that. If the board members would like to, to identify a spot to vote on, to approve, that can be done too. But one of the things this ordinance is definitely protecting us against is somebody pulling up here and parking in the parking spaces. They could come, you know, without an ordinance in place, I mean, the police is still going to run them off if they come in and park in the Main Street area where all the parking is around the water fountain. We're still going to tell them to move because they can't come up and take up all the parking. But what this does is give the police department a little bit more authority to say, look, you can't park here, taking up parking, plus we have an order. So people that want to run a food truck, they still have an opportunity to do that in town. But as this ordinance stands, the, you know, the mayor would have the discretion to approve where they do sell. So maybe they want to go over there and set up in the farmer's market, that's public property, it's city property. Or maybe they want to go to the schoolhouse, that's public property. I mean, they're not blocking people's parking spots. So there are alternatives to it, so.
But now, if one person comes in and we had like one place that we normally put them, and they wanted a year permit, it's not going to be where nobody else could come in and take their place, or, I mean, it's not going to be when they pay $250, that's their place for a year, is it?
Well, it may be if they get a letter of permission from a property owner that says they can set up on their property. You see what I'm saying? So public property is not really the place for people to operate their business, but private property is along Main Street, things like that.
It would have to be on private property for them to set up for a year, do you think?
In my opinion, yes. I don't know that we would want people setting up on public property, but in other counties and other areas, they do set up on Main Street, they do set up in parking lots. If you go to Savannah, they set in, you know, the big, big box store parking lot. So I think that is something for the board to discuss beyond just the ordinance, because we don't have a very good description of where specifically can a food vending area be or anything like that, so.
I think we need to table it again, because I don't think it's clear enough yet in the, on this personally, I don't think it's clear enough yet. I think we need to have a, a place.
Well, we've already tabled it once, and so where we are now is to vote on it.
Right.
So if you don't like how it is right now, you can vote no for the approval, and then we'll circle back around some other day if it comes up again. So.
I mean, we can, yeah.
Yeah. So what I would advise you of, if you don't like the ordinance because it's already been discussed, and we already had a first and second motion, and it's already been tabled once, if you oppose it, just vote no, and it will not pass. And then at some point, it'll circle back around. Okay? All right, any other discussion or question? All right, we'll call for the question. Alderman Maynard.
You want me to vote?
Yep.
Nope.
All right, Alderman Morgan.
No.
Alderman Woods.
No.
Alderman Carter.
No.
Motion fails. Okay, we'll put that aside. Thank you so much for that. Get out of the way. All right, next on our list, APR funds. I didn't really have any details on that right now, other than to tell you on old business, we are, we'll be doing a transaction for the Cyrene Grant that'll be closed out as we come through this week. They're coming back, I'll tell you more about that in a minute. So we'll have, I think it was somewhere around 16,000, 16 or 18,000, you remember what I'm saying? I think it was about 18,000 that we have allotted toward those Cyren, okay? All right, new business. You should have in front of you a hiring policy.
You hear any calls, Senator?
Y'all have that in front of you?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, did you not receive that in the email either?
I didn't even receive an email.
You didn't receive an email?
No, sir.
When was the email sent?
Friday.
At least I got one, but I didn't get one.
Okay.
I need you to send a alarm. I have it in mine.
So you have a copy?
They're looking at mine.
We only got one copy?
Yep.
Yeah, this hiring policy, this hiring policy is tied directly to the CBD G grant.
Do we need to make the copy, and have y'all reviewed it?
They are right now, but.
All right, I recommend a motion to accept the hiring policy.
I make a motion that we.
Motion by Alderman Wood.
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderman Maynard. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for question. Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Alderman Wood.
Yes.
Alderman Carter.
Yes.
Alderman Reeves.
Yes, sir.
Alderman Maynard.
Yes.
Hiring policy is approved. Okay. All right, next on the agenda, do you all have the resolution for equipment surplus? 2023-05.
Do we sell the rest of this stuff out there to other things?
I'll get to that, but we got this on tape right now.
Do you want a motion to accept this?
Yeah, I would recommend a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Alderman Maynard.
I second.
Seconded by Alderman Morgan. Any discussion?
Is all of these pieces out of the maintenance department?
Yes, yes, we have on the list a 720 finishing mower. It is actually inside the maintenance shop. It's not been used for years. We don't have the apparatus to operate it. It's in very good condition. The GMD 400 disc mower, made, I think in France or something like that, that it is outside the shop, and it's weeds growing up all around it, hasn't ever been used that I know of, and may have been bought by a couple of previous administrations. And a Ryan Crab John boat trailer and hull that has no motor, anything like that on it, and the trailer's in bad shape, but anyway, so those we are looking to surplus. These funds on sale will be either fire department and/or maintenance department, because it's what, it's maintenance equipment. So any discussion?
The packet was in spam for some reason.
The packet was in spam, okay.
That's why nobody got it. Yeah, they got it, but.
Okay. All right.
This equipment, can I?
Yeah, we're in a discussion.
This equipment surplus, when we sell something, our, we have money left over from the designated fire department, whatever. That money just goes back into the general fund, right?
It can, or like I just mentioned, the maintenance equipment, the money will go back into the maintenance budget for something else we need. The boat is a fire department piece, that money will go back into the fire department. I mean, that's the way I look at it.
So that will increase, let's say, whatever the budget is tonight for '23, '24, if we sell something in July or August, that would increase that budget.
Well.
If we sell something that's inoperable.
Not necessarily, okay? So giving an example in that. The budget is a budget, okay? So the sale or proceeds from a sale do go into a general fund, but we're saying that we earmark it to use as fire department expenditure. So if the fire department budget is $1,000, and we sell that boat for $200, we will allow the fire department to spend that $200.
Okay.
See what I'm saying? So the budget is what the budget is. It doesn't, you know, the money doesn't go necessarily directly into that account, we just have made a budget. All the money goes into a general fund account. All right? Any, any further discussion?
No, nothing made.
All right, I recommend a motion to approve.
I'm voting.
Motion by Alderman Reeves.
I'll second.
Second, I thought, did we do this already? Oh, we already, I'm sorry. My bad. Yeah, second was by who originally?
Morgan. It was a first by Maynard, second by Morgan.
Yeah, okay, okay. All right, okay, so call for question. It will be Alderman Wood.
Yes.
Alderman Carter.
Yes.
Alderman Reeves.
Yes, sir.
Alderman Maynard.
Yes.
Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Resolution passed. So back to your question about surplus property. The three vehicles that were sitting over in the junk pile, we did sell all three, and I can't quote to you right now what we received from them, but for the, the truck and the white Dodge, we received more than we expected, what still wasn't a whole lot, but all three were sold. If you want the details on that, Miss Ann can tell you what we received directly from that, or Chief Graves, because he was our agent to help post it on GovDeals and follow the process that is in our purchasing policy and surplus policy. So I'm thinking it might have been all three somewhere around $2,000. It wasn't much, they, you know, actually, the truck actually cranked up and moved, and so did the white Durango, but it wasn't going to move far. They moved it enough to get it on the truck. So, yeah, we did a little bit better than we can, we cleaned up our junk pile over there a little bit, so, okay? Any other questions about that?
So that goes just into the?
General fund.
General fund, yes.
But a couple of those vehicles were identified through the fire department. But I will say that this process on the, I think it was the Durango, we posted it the first time for like $500. No, it was $800 thing. No one bid on it. So a month later, we posted for $500, and I think we ended up getting $800 for it or something like that. It's a, you know, it's the way you have the surplus property that the city has purchased, and also the records followed that, so for Alderman and all those kind of things, okay? All right, surplus property. I have a budget amendment on here, because we don't have that in our packet, I don't think, do we? I don't think so. So budget for 2024, you should have that in front of you. I will tell you, based on our last two budget planning meetings, that I have gone back over the last couple of weeks and reviewed the budget sheets again. It would be handy for you to have the expenditure sheet. Y'all have that in front of you, the expenditure sheet?
Yes, sir.
And also the proposed 24 budget. Those two things are important to have in front of you. And these, again, is the proposed budget. This budget has to be submitted next month, basically, so we'll need to pass this budget this month, preferably tonight, but we can entertain questions, moving things around if you need to. I can tell you specifically what I moved around, if you'd like to know, or you may have already read it. This is not what you're getting now. Y'all got a fresh one just now?
There was one here that is a fresh one that we got that is different from the one we had in our last meeting.
Yeah, so it is different, that's right. It's different from what you had before regarding expenditure.
Right.
So we can talk about those. Now, again, this is a budget. It must be balanced and presented, and there is an ordinance that we will discuss after that, while we have to do this. But this is simply a budget, just like you running your own household, or buying groceries or anything else, paying the utility bill. So this is just a budget. The revenues are what the revenues are. We can't really budget revenue, because we, they are given to us based on our tax rate or sales tax or property tax, that kind of thing. So if you look at page two expenditures, I can show you a few things through here, unless you have some questions, if you'd like me to explain or expound on some areas that were changed.
Well, refresh my memory about the general maintenance, salary for general maintenance.
Okay.
All right, I recommend a motion to accept the hiring policy.
I make a motion that we...
Motion by Alderman Wood.
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Maynard. Any discussion? Hearing none. We're called for question. Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Alderman Wood.
Yes.
Alderman Carter.
Yes.
Alderman Reed.
Yes, sir.
Alderman Maynard.
Yes.
The policy is approved. Okay. All right, next on the agenda, do you all have the resolution for equipment surplus? Twenty twenty-three oh five.
Do we sell the rest of this stuff out there to other things?
I get to that, but we got this on tape right now.
Do you want a motion to accept this?
Yeah, I would recommend a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
A motion by Alderman Maynard.
I say.
Second by Alderman Morgan. Any discussion?
Is all of these pieces out of the maintenance department?
Yes, yes. We have on the list a seven-twenty finishing mower. It is actually inside the maintenance shop. It's not been used for years. We don't have the apparatus to operate it. It's in very good condition. The GMD four-hundred disc mower, made, I think in France or something like that, that it is outside the shop and it's weeds growing up all around it. Has ever been used that I know of, and may have been bought by a couple of previous administrations. And a Ryan Crab John boat trailer and hull that has no motor, anything like that on it, and the trailer's in bad shape, but anyway, so those we are looking to surplus. These funds on sale will be either fire department and/or maintenance department, because it's what it's maintenance equipment. So, any discussion?
The packet was in spam for some reason.
Packet was in spam.
Why nobody got it? They got it, but...
Okay, all right.
This equipment, can I...
Yeah, we're in a discussion.
This equipment surplus, when we sell something, our, we have money left over from the designated fire department, whatever. That money just goes back into the general fund, right?
It can, or like I just mentioned, the maintenance equipment, the money will go back into the maintenance budget for something else we need. The boat is a fire department piece. That money will go back into the fire department. I mean, that's the way I look at it.
So that will increase, let's say, whatever the budget is tonight for twenty-three, twenty-four. If we sell something in July or August, that would increase that budget.
Well...
If we sell something that's inoperable...
Not necessarily, okay. So, giving an example here. The budget is a budget, okay? So, the sale or proceeds from a sale do go into a general fund. But we're saying that we earmark it to use as fire department expenditure. So, if the fire department budget is a thousand dollars and we sell that boat for two hundred dollars, we will allow the fire department to spend that two hundred dollars.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying. So, the budget is what the budget is. It doesn't, you know, the money doesn't go necessarily directly into that account. We just have made a budget. All the money goes into a general fund account. All right. Any, any further discussion?
No, nothing made.
All right. I recommend a motion to approve.
I'm voting.
Motion by Alderman Reed.
I'll second.
Second, I thought, did we do this already? Oh, well, I'm sorry. Yeah, second was by who originally?
Morgan. It was first by Maynard, second by Morgan.
Okay, okay, all right. Okay, so, call for question. It will be Alderman Wood.
Yes.
Alderman Carter.
Yes.
Alderman Reed.
Yes, sir.
Alderman Maynard.
Yes.
Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Resolution passed. So, back to your question about surplus property. The three vehicles that were sitting over in the junk pile, we did sell all three. And I can't quote to you right now what we received from them, but for the, the truck and the white Dodge, we received more than we expected. What still wasn't a whole lot, but all three were sold. If you want the details on that, Miss Anne can tell you what we received directly from that or Chief Graves, because he was our agent to help post it on GovDeals and follow the process that is in our purchasing policy and surplus policy. So, I'm thinking it might have been all three somewhere around two thousand dollars. It wasn't much. They, you know, actually, the truck actually cranked up and moved, and so did the white Durango, but it wasn't going to move far. They moved it enough to get it on the truck. So, yeah, we did a little bit better than we can. We cleaned up our junk pile over there a little bit, so, okay. Any other questions about that?
So that goes just into the...
General fund.
General fund, yes.
But a couple of those vehicles were identified through the fire department. But I will say that this process on the, I think it was the Durango, we posted it the first time for like five hundred dollars. No, it was eight hundred dollar thing. No one bid on it. So, a month later, we posted for five hundred dollars, and I think we ended up getting eight hundred dollars for it or something like this. It's a, you know, it's the way you have the surplus property that the city has purchased, and also the records followed that, so, for all of these and all those kind of things, okay? All right, surplus property. I have a budget amendment on here, because we don't have that in our packet, I don't think, do we? I don't think so. So, budget for twenty twenty-four, you should have that in front of you. I will tell you, based on our last two budget planning meetings, that I have gone back over the last couple of weeks and reviewed the budget sheets again. It would be handy for you to have the expenditure sheet. Y'all have that in front of you, the expenditure sheet?
Yes, sir.
And also the proposed twenty-four budget. Those two things are important to have in front of you. And these, again, is the proposed budget. This budget has to be submitted next month basically, so we'll need to pass this budget this month, preferably tonight, but we can entertain questions, moving things around if you need to. I can tell you specifically what I moved around if you'd like to know, or you may have already read it. This is not what you're getting now. Y'all got a fresh one just now?
There was one here that is a fresh one that we got that is different from the one we had in our last meeting.
That's right. It's different from what you had before regarding expenditure.
Right.
So, we can talk about those. Now, again, this is a budget. It must be balanced and presented, and there is an ordinance that we will discuss after that while we have to do this. But this is simply a budget, just like you're running your own household or buying groceries or anything else paying utility bills. So, this is just a budget. The revenues are what the revenues are. We can't really budget revenue, because we, they are given to us based on our tax rate or sales tax or property tax, that kind of thing. So, if you look at page two expenditures, I can show you a few things through here unless you have some questions, if you'd like me to explain or expound on some areas that were changed.
I'll refresh my memory about the general maintenance, salary for general maintenance.
Okay, salary for general maintenance. In the past, we paid maintenance out of three different funds, out of street aid, out of general maintenance, and out of parks. So, based on our M-TAS representatives and budget support, we have narrowed that down to two places that we pay maintenance. We pay them either out of the general fund maintenance, or we pay them out of street aid. So, if they work in a park, they're still working for us, we pay them out of only the two funds, so. And we have two part-time maintenance workers, so. So, if you look at salary on general maintenance, that's forty-one nine hundred one one zero. That is part of it. And then under street aid, you'll see another maintenance salary, so that's what we pay.
I have another, I'm going to tell you, I got several questions, but I'm just...
That's what this is about. We're going to have to get to a point to pass it, yeah, yeah, or change it or whatever.
The unemployment insurance, how come it went down? I thought that that was a fixed, I thought unemployment insurance would be...
Give me the number on that where I can identify it.
It is four-one-nine-zero-zero-zero-one-four-seven.
One-four-seven.
Yeah. Seven hundred last year is what we budgeted for it, for this year.
It's never been more than a couple hundred dollars. I don't know why it's been budgeted every year so high, because it goes by the number of employees you have and what their name.
And if you look at your expenditure sheet, what we base our projected budget off of is this expenditure sheet. And if you find that on there, the unemployment insurance, we've only spent, year to date, now we got another month, but we've only spent two-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents for the whole year.
Two-hundred-and-eighty-nine?
Two-hundred-and-eighty-nine seventy-two. This is on the expenditure sheet. This shows what we paid year to date in the second to the last column on your right.
Right.
Okay, so that's why we changed it so dramatically.
Do you have the total of the maintenance, the two maintenance?
Do we have the total?
Yeah, what, what would that be?
You talking about, are there salary year to date?
Of what we're, what we've been looking at.
I'm sorry, I'm not following you.
Salary of general maintenance, that's in two different places, right?
Yeah, that's right.
It's on the street, it's on the street aid thing, Karen.
Well, the budget, the proposed budget is under street aid, and it's under general maintenance, which is on page one. But what we've actually paid them throughout this past year is on your budget expenditures report in three different places, because we've changed it.
To date, it's fifteen thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty cents.
Thank you. I just think it's important that, you know, you have all this, you know, numbers and things, and it's sometimes you get to looking at things, and then you think, well, it's here, 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 and here, and I understand why it has to be that way, because the state wants you doing it that way, but I think it would be good for us to have an idea, like for instance, what we pay for, what does the city pay in utility costs? You know, so it's been here, 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 and here, that you say, okay, our utility costs, electric, streetlights is separate, gas and water, what does it come to? What does it cost us? Thirty thousand dollars, so.
Well, I can share that with you right now.
Okay.
So, on this budget expenditures list, based on the last twelve months or eleven months, I think you did this month's bill, didn't it? It comes to forty-one nine hundred electric. For the city, it's four thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents. Wait, I take it back. It's five thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixteen cents. For gas for the city is three thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars. For water for the city is a hundred and ninety-five dollars. For telephone, we have changed our telephone system, by the way. It is costing one thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And for cable and internet, it costs for the city three thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Oh, God, Marcy, that scares me.
I thought that we, we have six, we have six water meters, and they averaged, I thought, usually around five hundred for the year. So, the, you just said a hundred and ninety-something?
Unless I read it wrong, a hundred and ninety-five dollars.
I think, I think that usually, one year when we had all those leaks at the community center, which can be...
Well, that may be true, but we, I don't think we've had that problem this year.
No, no, we haven't had that. That was just one out of five or six or seven years.
I got you.
So, it averages about five, but I think it's good to have, you know, things compiled, you can't do everything that way. But I do think it's good to have things broken down where people say, okay, you know, we're paying thirty thousand dollars for utilities. We're paying this for salaries. We're paying this for fire department, just a overview, because then you say, hey, we're, we're spending more than we're making here.
I guess. Well, that's why we have this list every week, every month, for expenditures that you go down line by line and see what the monthly cost was versus the last three months or six months, whatever the minimum would be, and what the budget is for the year. That's what...
Yeah, I wasn't talking about for us necessarily. We have the, this, all this information.
Yeah.
But, you know, just as, I mean, as a citizen, it would be good to know when somebody says, hey, what'd you spend all this money for? And you go, well, you know, if we don't have thirty thousand dollars, you forget your water, your electricity, and your streetlights. You know, so money doesn't grow on trees, just like it does in, in my house. But I think it's good to know a total in different areas, if possible, so, which I think...
Where do we have cable at?
We're not going to do that each month. I mean, it's clearly...
No, I mean, at the end of the year. I didn't mean each month.
Yeah, well, even, I get you. On the end of the year, you can do that. It's not a, it's easy to do, because all you got to do is go through this list, just like we just did. Gave it out to you what the expenditures were, based on what last year's expenses were, so it's, it's not a hard thing to do. I'm not arguing about not doing it. I'm just saying it's, it's, it's right here in black and white. And we can do that to make it easier on Alderman. It's not a problem, but, yeah, so. All right, any other discussion or questions?
Who has that cable down here in the city? I don't mean, I'm not being, I'm not per nitpick. I mean, I just know my cable bill just went up astronomically. And I'm like, I don't know, I'm a forty...
We have cable and internet at the community center, and we have cable, internet stuff. It's the same packet where what you get here in this office. And then the police department do Wi-Fi streaming to get the access to it. So, we actually have it in two places. So, both bills are combined. So, we have a bill for the community center area. We have a bill for the... And, and, yeah, yeah, the cameras at the boat ramp are, we pay an internet for that, too, yeah.
So, at the community center is for the whole thing, like the safe...
Library, senior citizens, that's right, or anybody that goes in the auditorium.
Yeah.
Okay, additional questions?
I, I don't know if this is the right place. You can tell me if it is. I would like to, I'm not a business owner any longer. So, I, and I, this has been a problem, I thought, ever since two thousand and eleven. I think, I would like to see us budget some kind, some monies for promotion of Saltillo, per se, instead of waiting for the tourism, pardon, kind of tourism to take care of that for us, you know? We don't have a sign at, we've been talking about it ever since two thousand and eight, having a sign at Glendale and Coffee Bottom Road that says, "Saltillo, so many miles this way." And, and then whether we put something in one of the papers or whatever, or make sure we, to promote Saltillo and the businesses that are here. You know, you could name, like the Mr., whatever's behind my store building, you know, he, and he has a mechanic shop. List all the businesses that have paid, have bought a business license. We promote all of those three, four, five times a year.
Well, let, let me show you where you do that. It's in the budget right here.
Okay, good deal.
It's under news, publications, ads, and recording.
I saw that, but it doesn't look like it's a whole much money there.
Well, it's not. So, y'all tell me if you want to make a budget adjustment, because I present to you, based on a prospectus of the past year, a balanced budget for revenue and expenses. So, if you want to move some things around, this is the time to do it, but the budget still has to be balanced in the end. So, if you want to put more money into publications, ads, and recordings, that it just needs to be a recommendation by the board, and, you know, I hope it would be unanimous that all of them agree together. But it went up.
I would, I would, when it, when it, when is the right time I want to make a motion that we do?
Okay, this is the time.
We look more seriously at promoting our town as a wonderful place to be.
You're saying two different things, okay? So, if you want to look at what we can do to promote the town is one thing. But if you're going to pay for it is another. So, tonight is about paying for things. So, if you think five hundred dollars needs to be increased to something else, you need to tell me throughout the budget, because we've had two budget planning sessions.
I know.
How much you want to increase it, and then where you going to cut it out of the other expenditures. So, if you add five hundred dollars in this line item, you got to have somewhere else to take five hundred dollars out.
No, let me ask you the, okay, so while you're talking about that, because I did notice it increased from the last time we talked about it. What about the eighty-five hundred dollars that we have for camera and IT work repairs? Because I guess that's what that's...
Yeah, I, I share that with you, okay? So, I personally increased that based on the approval to spend five thousand dollars to build a staircase in this fire hall so that we can get to city records, fire records, archives, and also equipment. So, I estimated that would cost about five thousand dollars to do that. And then the IT work and cameras, you know, when we replace cameras, we have somebody adjust camera. We have all the, that is in that same thing. So, it's in there because it's contract labor. So, I, I, our maintenance department will not build a staircase, because it has to be built by somebody licensed and all that kind of stuff, you know? So, that's where that increase was. So, yes, you can take money out of that line item and reduce it, so it would be something else. But in the end, if you increase an expenditure, you got to decrease it somewhere else. So, if that is something that the board wants to do, this, I mean, this is the time to do it.
You can take that five hundred dollars from...
Another thing about that is that...
So, as far as publications, memberships?
I think we should add five hundred dollars to it, because I also think, we've talked for many, I mean, I have just been on the board two and a half years, but we have talked numerous times about putting a sign up at Coffee Lane and Road down there at the bottom about Saltillo. We still have two that we maintain that we've had to have redone on.
Let's get to that in just a second.
Okay.
Let's deal with the publication, ad, and recording.
Is that the right place for it?
Yes.
For that, okay.
That is the only place.
Okay. I said that we add five hundred dollars to it.
So, all in favor of adding five hundred dollars, recognized by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I oppose, because I want to know where we're taking it from first.
Yep, be a good idea. Okay, so, Alderman, we have a decision tonight.
Have you had bids on the stairs yet to see?
No, it was just a, just an estimate, just in the stairway.
Well, just looking back at our, this may be a possible, it may not be, but we have budgeted fired fire department twelve to thirteen thousand dollars a year, and we've only used, we've, one time we've used eight thousand, I think, and the other times we've only used around six thousand. So, there's about, I think, five hundred dollars there that we haven't used before. We, in the last five years, we haven't used, so we could take five hundred dollars, because they're using about half of it.
All right, so what line item do you want to take money out of the fire department budget?
Well, let me find it. You have to help me find it. I don't know all these numbers.
Four twenty-two.
Four twenty-two, zero, zero, yeah. It says salary secretary is the first one on there.
And of course you can't...
Special services, repair maintenance, contact labor, office supplies. You've got fifteen hundred dollars in, that's training. I don't know what that means exactly.
Their training is what that is.
Okay, for instance, fuel and oil. Fuel and oil over the past five years, fire department. Out of five years, they've used five hundred dollars. One year they used nothing on the...
Well, let, let me address that right quick.
Okay.
That's going to change, and they're going to use more gas and fuel, because I told them, get the trucks on the road and run them and get appropriate training. So, in the past years, they haven't really been driving very much. I'll be honest with you, that they have not driven those trucks very much in the past...
Well, there would be five hundred dollars there going back five years.
Yeah, yeah, they have one, yeah.
I didn't know you decided that that wasn't going to work.
Yeah.
Well, why don't we take it out of...
Okay, for one thing, I don't know how many, if we're adding any more street lights, but our street lights for a year cost us about...
You can't take money out of street aid, put somewhere...
Street lighting, it's not street aid, is it?
Street lighting, you talking about forty-three, one hundred?
Yeah, and two forty-seven, zero, zero, two. Street lighting cost us his, it's eleven thousand seven hundred. That's about, I think, the norm. And we budgeted fifteen thousand, so we could take maybe a couple hundred there. We could take a couple hundred, two of that.
We've actually budgeted eighteen thousand this time, because, you know, we've had a request for about eight or nine lights to be installed and to be added to our yearly budget, so that's why that line item was increased. But if you want to take five hundred dollars out of street lighting, we can reduce that to seventeen-five, and we can do maybe less or work within our budget. So, I mean, if that's something that the board wants to agree to do.
I'm not familiar with where we should take it, where we shouldn't take. I know you're more aware of that than, than the rest of us. So, I don't think five hundred dollars is a lot of money, okay? Unless this, unless this, you know, you can't do much with less than five hundred dollars. But, you know, maybe we can negotiate and just, I just, my thing is that we, you know, I think it's really important, you know, when you feel good, when you, when other people come to you and, and say, hey, things look like it's happening, or y'all have all these things down there, you're having the poker run, you're doing all these fun things, but we don't, and you think, well, that makes you feel proud as a citizen. So, I just think that there's ways that we could promote our town that would be beneficial financially and otherwise, too. But it doesn't have to, we voted five hundred, but I can't believe in, in this big a budget, there's not a place for five hundred, but I don't know where it could come from. I mean, I'm not familiar enough to know where it could come from.
Well, and I understand that. This is a hard thing to sort through. I would tell you, the board member, that, and all of you as a board member, I look at this report on budgets multiple times a week, and that trying to estimate and plan for the future. Do we spend over our budget sometimes? Yes, we do, just like you do at home. But this is a, a budget proposal. So, what I would advise is to not change it, and then review what you want to do as we discussed, and see what that would cost in the future. But, you know, it, it may increase the budget, or you might have to do something at a lesser expense somewhere else. But as Alderman Maynard mentioned about building a sign, that can be under different places. That can be under contract labor, you know, those kind of things. So, or it could be under a grant of some sort that we may get, so.
Well, we're talking about a grant we may get. We've been... We've been looking at road signs, just, just as an example of doing this, you know? You're waiting, 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 waiting. We've been looking at road signs for fifteen, twelve years, ten years. And we still don't have any road signs.
Well.
But because we were going to wait and try to find the cars.
I don't want to be argumentative with you at this point, but roadside we can discuss. But what we need to really look at is the budget.
I didn't mean to, to, I was, that was an example of, let's budget it, not just push it aside and say, okay, we'll look at it another time. And then time goes by before we realize it and things happen.
I agree, I agree. And some things have always been put aside, I believe, because there was not nearly the revenue to operate.
Oh, I agree, before.
Yeah, so back to the budget decision. Are, are you wanting to increase that? Or are you wanting the, this is publications and ads? Or you want to leave it where it is? If you want to increase it, we got to know where to take the money out.
Well, we can take parking Christmas expense.
You, you very well could.
Because we will never spend a thousand dollars.
Okay.
I said it last year. Remember, we had a little debate up here and, but I, I overseen that project three or four years and I know what it's going to cost.
Yep, so the Christmas expense.
The reason it costs that much, I want to say this, the reason that that happened was because when they bought the lights to light up downtown that are still being lit up today, came out of the Christmas thing. It did not come out of the general fund. That's why the actual Christmas parade was less than two hundred dollars. So let's go ahead and say that. Those lights that are still shining right now got pulled out of that, got pulled onto that Christmas thing. And we were, I was told it would not, that it would not, when I went and bought it, that it was coming out of the general fund. So I'm just going to say that. That's, that, no, we all agreed that a thousand dollars was not, not it.
Right, that'd be where I'd start, especially since our lights are working.
So, so let me understand, you're making a recommendation to increase the publication budget by five hundred dollars and reducing the Christmas expense by five hundred dollars?
Well, we can do two fifty from there and then we can keep studying here. And I can find another two fifty.
Okay.
Well.
Because we, what we got out there, a thousand dollars on Christmas?
We found several places, we can take a little bit here, there, and yonder.
Well.
Yeah, but I'm not, I'm not in favor of touching the first responders at all.
No, I know, well, that's, that's another story too, I agree. But, but we have never, in, in five years, we have only used half of what we budgeted or less.
Over a five-year period.
Over a five-year period, we've only used half of what we budgeted. Here, here's the data if you want it. So I don't think that we're going to have a catastrophe, hopefully, not, nothing burns down or anything else, that we couldn't take five hundred dollars from that fund. We've got, we, we have a surplus of five thousand plus every year, basically. We don't want to cut them, I'm just saying they don't use it. But you said they're going to use it now, so I don't know. I guess you need a motion or not a motion, huh? You know? Do we need a, where, what's on the floor right now?
What we will do in the budget matters, someone will make a recommendation and we will vote as a aye or nay. So the ayes will have it if it is a majority.
To in, to change?
To increase a line item.
Okay. Oh, okay.
So the, the question remains to increase the publications by five hundred dollars and where would you take it from the other parts of the budget?
Is it two questions or one?
It's, it's two questions. One is to increase the budget.
We've already decided that, right?
Well, no.
Oh, wow.
Because, well, the majority did, but we didn't decide where we're going to take it from. So, yeah, so yes, we agreed to add five hundred dollars, but we didn't determine where it was coming from, that is correct.
If we took just two fifty out of the contract labor for the camera and talking about the stairs out of the eighty-five hundred, just took two hundred and fifty there?
You can take two fifty from that, yeah. You can do that.
Well, let me ask you a question, let's, let's get to it. Why don't we got seven thousand, five hundred dollars for July four in this budget?
Because of the last planning session, that the discussion was about ten thousand dollars and I could not make the budget balance by doing ten thousand dollars, so I reduced it to seven thousand dollars.
So is that for this coming July four?
This is twenty-twenty-four budget.
But we'll be budgeting again next year, is that not right?
For twenty-twenty-five.
It'll start July?
No, this budget is for July one. That covers twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four. This is the July one budget, right, right. So if you're on a budget for fireworks, that money has to be spent back in January to get you products. So this is the next year's budget, yeah.
And then about the certification of someone to do it? Was it, then you bring that up later?
Well, yeah, there's a whole another thing with that. But this is strictly about the next year's budget for expenditures. So Alderman Maynard, I mean Alderman Morgan mentioned taking two fifty out of the repair contract labor. And that was two fifty. And then Alderman Reeves mentioned taking two fifty out of Christmas. Does that sound equitable to the Alderman? I see some heads nodding, so all in favor of taking two fifty out of Christmas expense and two fifty out of the contract labor and adding five hundred to publications, recognized by voting aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we got something done, okay? So we got that done, all right? Let's keep moving, I feel good, we made progress, all right? Let's keep going, all right? Other questions? This is hard work. I know people watching this on the Facebook video thing will probably think, man, this, you know, but this is hard work. You will make a determination.
That's our job, it's, they're the good stewards of the.
It's harder than your whole budget, I can tell you.
All right, so other questions, other budgetary items? The budget is still balanced at this point because we moved money around, so that's a great thing. One item I want you to look at while you're thinking, forty-one, nine hundred, five-ten, I think this is on page three. You should see a pretty considerable increase of insurance and bonds from twenty-two thousand to twenty-six thousand. The reason I recommended that change was because on your yearly expenditures, we're already at like twenty-two or twenty-one thousand, I think. Let me look at it again. Now, we're at twenty-four, nine, twenty-nine. So we have exceeded our budget by thirteen percent in that item. That's why we raised it to twenty-six thousand, it's gone up, so. All right, additional questions? There was one mentioned about fireworks. If you look back at that budget, I will explain again. This fireworks expense is, is, comes from a discussion that we had in two planning sessions about wanting fireworks. We discussed about partnering with the Arden County Tourism possibly to give us some money to, to do that. The Alderman and I think Alderman Reeves was absent, had discussed making that ten thousand. I could not make that budget work on ten thousand, so I reduced it to seven thousand, fifty dollars. That is still not going to cover a fireworks show, but we'll have to work on some grants or some tourism support, some donations or something to make that. Because a fireworks show itself for a professional, the same professional that's used by Wayne County for a thirty-minute show with music is twenty thousand dollars. And it has to be purchased and confirmed by December or January. It'll be this year, December or January. If you use an amateur, there are some lesser expenses. But one of the things that we certainly will include is a safety plan on how it's set up and how we operate. But that's for another day, but, so that's a fireworks expense. That's, unless you can squeeze a few thousand out of another line item, that I, I just couldn't make it work. Plus, we're talking about spending tax money on fireworks, that's a lot of money. Based on our budget, you know, property taxes, about sixty-one thousand revenue, we're talking about putting seven thousand of that in a fireworks show, so that's to me a concern that you and all citizens should have. But hopefully, even though we budgeted, we can get some help from tourism maybe because they really promoted our area, so anyway. Additional questions, concerns? That twenty-six thousand was a big one, that was, that was a little bit of a shocker to me too after I started looking again at the budget. And River Day, I believe, the expense there is seventy-five hundred dollars is what we voted last year to budget for River Day, that's why it's seventy-five hundred dollars. Your electric bills, water bill, they're going to be kind of what they are. Your salary is going to be what it is.
Is this where we do it?
Oh. I'm not sure what else I can share with you unless you have some questions. I will assure you that I've combed over this as best I could along with the CMFO, Ms. Jackson, to look at our projections for twenty-twenty-four. In our previous planning session, we gave you three years' worth of expenditures to review and study. And we've done the best we could do and we have talked regularly about this budget. But we must present a balanced budget and that's kind of our, what we've got to do.
Is this, is this what we made off of River Day last year? After expenses?
No, this is what we budgeted.
Are you looking at the expenditure sheet?
Yeah.
Yeah, see, we originally, if you look at that middle column, we originally budgeted six thousand dollars for the event. That was in July twenty, twenty-two, I guess. And then at some point along that year, we determined to spend seventy-five hundred dollars on River Day. This budget was already put in place July first of twenty-twenty-two. And that's why it showed that we have spent more than what we have budgeted. And I think there was something else in that too. The previous Tennessee River Heritage, I think it's some money in there for that too. That's why it looks like it's two thousand dollars over budget. But I take it back, it's, yeah, two thousand dollars, that's what it looks like.
What did we do different last year that, was that the music that went and made it jump so much?
There was an increase in the cost of musicians and I think sound equipment was a little bit more of a portabodies, I think, was the thing that went up with it.
Yeah, we added more bodies, it was, it was a good chunk and then we added higher-end bands.
We paid some electrical, I think, too, didn't we? Did we have something that we had to pay for there?
Not last year.
No, that was free.
And we have to, we flip over water during, for that month. Some of your water and electrical and everything is slipped to River Day instead of coming out of the general fund for that event.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I just looked at the twenty-two actual and the.
Yeah, the eight thousand.
The big part of that was the bands and the, and the potties.
And we paid for the mural.
That's right, yeah.
The mural was the big thing last year. I think that was the biggest expense because we had to pay for that.
Oh, yeah, that's what River Day did, yeah, yeah.
We normally try to stay within what we receive from Arden County.
And we do have a letter be submitted on Thursday for six thousand dollars for Arden County. They're part of it, so. Other budget item, let's not get sidetracked, other budget item. So there anything else you see that you want to adjust? I, I will tell the board that on some of the maintenance and supply issues, we have gone quite a while for our town to not do any preventative maintenance on certain things. And so we have incurred some extra costs in this past year. One example is the police car. We've hired another officer and we've had to sink some money into this old car to get it working so that it will be safe and all, and run. Same thing with some of the fire equipment. But we still are catching up on some things that have been neglected over the years. And I'm, you know, and I'm not saying that in any kind of derogatory or bad way toward any previous administration or previous board members. I'm just saying that's just the way it was. You, you put things together the best you could with what you had to work with, just like we do at home. And sometimes you have to not do something because you didn't have money to fix it, you know? Just the way it is. But now, you know, we're, you know, end up, I say, in a better spot, but we still got plenty to do.
Well, I make a motion that we accept the budget.
Motion has been made to accept the twenty-twenty-four budget. Is there a second?
I second.
There's a second by Alderman Morgan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a question. I believe, who was the last person to start with that? Alderman Morgan, you started to vote last time? I think so.
Yeah.
Mary, uh, yeah, yeah, on the last item, yeah. So Alderman Wood?
Yes.
Alderman Carter?
Yes.
Alderman Reeves?
Yes, sir.
Alderman Maynard?
Yes.
And Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Okay, we have passed a twenty-twenty-four balanced budget. I do have another ordinance for you. So this budget that we passed goes with this ordinance. And do we have to make an adjustment on this based on that two hundred and fifty and five hundred dollars?
We do, I've already.
You've already done it?
Yeah.
So.
I've, I've got a change page.
Okay, so the big part of this, ordinance twenty-twenty-three oh-nine and an ordinance of the town of Saltillo, you have already passed. But I want to make sure you understand, it's a lot of whereas and where to and that kind of stuff. But the governing body has published the annual operating budget and budgetary comparisons of the proposed budget with the prior year actual and the current year estimate. So in the newspaper of general circulation, not less than ten days prior to the meeting where the board will consider final passage of this budget. So this is our final passage of the budget because we only need one vote, we don't have to pass it twice. And so this is a requirement by law that we submit a balanced budget to be posted in the newspaper. And so the five hundred dollars we discussed and we changed will be reflected in that posting. And so what will not be posted is this. This was your worksheet to see all the line items. This was your worksheet to see all the line items. What will be posted is the ordinance based on what the law requires. It looks a little different. I don't know if you have that in front of you or not, but it's a little bit less of a format than what we have provided you. Okay. So, uh, they didn't get that all right, yeah. So this is twenty twenty-three oh nine and you have passed a balanced budget. Okay? All right. So we'll move forth on that. Uh, budget amendment, we do not have tonight, uh, for two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, that's gonna be something that we're over budget. We're gonna have to do that in the next month or so. It's not a hurry. So that was twenty-three oh nine, okay? So, uh, July fourth, Alderman Maynard, you had addition to the, to the agenda, uh, go ahead and, uh, present your information.
Well, I know that, uh, there was a comment made on the South Tillo newspaper that just was kind of a generalized, uh, why we weren't having to contact you. And I feel like because of, I mean, I feel like this has been very important to our city. Everybody's enjoyed it, their friends, their family, their, everybody comes up here. I know it's like ten thousand dollars, I freak out on that too, you know? But all I'm saying is I think we need a, a, a better explanation in detail on why we're not having it because I don't think people realize really exactly. And, and I can put my two cents worth in and I don't mind, I never mind doing that, but, uh, and I'll, I'll say to anybody that's listening, when you get on social media after things happen and you tell blatant lies about what happened last year, this is part of the result of that right there. And that's what happened last year. Blatant lies that were not true were told about our, our town and what happened that night.
Is that, is that all you want me to share, the particulars?
I think that you, you need to share.
I would share the particulars. This decision falls at my desk to not have Fourth of July fireworks. Uh, on the onset of me being appointed as mayor in November, I began to review what the previous mayor had stated about, uh, I think it was also in the newspaper reported and it was discussed here in the board meeting, that we would not do fireworks in two thousand and twenty-three unless we hired a professional. So as getting into the office, I began to review that information as early as January, which as I mentioned, that's a little late to be able to review that. I did call, as I mentioned just a few minutes ago, the same organization that does Wayne County Firework Show every year, uh, thirty-minute show with music, was giving me an estimate at twenty thousand dollars. That's a professional private ticket. There are other people out of state that I contacted that were more than twenty thousand dollars. Uh, if you wanna call Wayne County, uh, City Hall and talk to the mayor there, he will give you the same information. So I went another route and talked to another semi-professional person to do fireworks. That was probably around, I don't know, February, March, might've been March, uh, that I thought we may have something going to do that. Uh, I talked to our fire chief, Melvin Martin, about the possibilities of doing a fireworks show. I'll expand on that in just a minute. However, I talked to Chief Graves also, because he's one of our primary people, about what the ins and outs are there. Uh, a few weeks later, that individual that I talked to, uh, decided to back out based on things he felt regarding safety or things that happened, uh, not enough time to plan and organize and specifically not enough time to buy the fireworks because that has to be done early. And if you don't have it done by January, you can just about forget it, okay? So, uh, that falls completely on my desk to have a hiatus on the fireworks performance for two thousand and twenty-three. So the two thousand and twenty-four, we have budgeted and if one of the aldermen would like to work with me on that project, it's gonna be some work involved, but it's gonna be some money we're gonna have to come up with. Talking to, uh, Chief Martin, of course, uh, one of the things that is required is a very specific safety plan. And regardless of what was said on social media about people, things that people think they know, it did, you know, like as you mentioned, it, it's not all factual or true. Uh, it was unfortunate that it didn't go off as planned. Uh, I have briefly talked to the person that have organized the last fireworks show about this a little bit and, and we talked again recently about some things, but, uh, I think it's really important for us as a city to avoid any potential, um, what's the word? Potential litigation or safety violations moving forward. If we're gonna have that many people come to see our show, we really need to have our stuff planned out adequately and there is a way to do it. Uh, and I've talked to some professionals about it. So there's a way to have a fireworks show on the riverbank, uh, and have a nice showing and be safe, uh, and to have everybody have an enjoyable time. It is not gonna come cheap. Uh, so, uh, that's the matter. It is stop, the buck stops here, as I would say. I am the one who made the ultimate decision not to do fireworks in two thousand and twenty-three.
My comment is we have to be safe always.
Right.
But, and I like fireworks. And if everybody wants to pitch in X amount of money, then that's great and wonderful. But to take money, that kind of money, you know? I don't, I don't see how that can work. That's my personal belief. You cannot take, you know, well, we could do it for whatever, four thousand dollars or something, but when you've got to hire a professional to be able to get insurance maybe, you know, and avoid litigation, then I, I, uh, I think we're gonna have to look at other resources because that can't come out of there.
And let me clarify, when I say avoid litigation, we weren't sued over this or anything like that. I'm just saying, as a person who has been responsible for adults and children for over thirty years, there are some things that has to be done on my experience and that's all I can base it on. So safety and welfare of participants and the organizer. But it is what it is. And so if we want to plan for two thousand and twenty-four, we have money in the budget and we need help to make it happen. We have budgeted seven thousand five hundred dollars, doesn't mean that's gonna be tax money. We did estimate it as though it were tax money, but if we get money from Hardin County Tourism, we would show that as a revenue and it would replace that seven thousand five hundred dollars, if they give us that much. And I think we have, uh, the opportunity to get a sizable amount if we show that we are, uh, moving forward in that plan to have a really nice fireworks show, not for South Tillo, but for Hardin County. Uh, so they will be parts within Tourism and getting our name out there and all those things. I am not opposed, I, I mean, I love fireworks too, but, you know, I, I have had to make a decision that was a difficult decision and is an unfavorable decision. But I've been making decisions for people in life for more than thirty years and it's just a decision that had to be made. And I know people don't agree with it and I know people are, are gonna hate it and bad mind and everything like that, but it is what it is. Any additional about this year's cancellation or hiatus of the fireworks show? All right. Alderman, is that kind of something?
I just felt like it needed to be, I just felt like that a, a more thorough explanation needed to be.
I agree. I mean, people, maybe you're serving answer. I'm with you. I, I got you. All right. So, uh, mayor's report. Uh, I will share with you the syring product, I mean product, what I'm talking about. The syring, uh, construction should be done this week. The guys are coming back. We've got two syrings in place. Everything went pretty well. They had a little equipment breakdown, that's why it hasn't been done already. Uh, this week, they're gonna be doing all computer stuff in the nine-one-one, uh, area and then programming our syringe. So the question was asked, are they gonna test them? I would say yes, but I don't know when. Hopefully, we can get a message out where it doesn't scare everybody to death, you know? But I'm sure Hardin County and EMA have a plan to test them weekly, if not monthly. And so we'll get all of that information from them. We don't have control over that, but, uh, we spent, I say we, we're fortunate to get a grant to purchase this and get this for our community that has been, again, long overdue and we have finally done it. So, uh, thanks to all the aldermen and mayors and people that were involved in that when it started over a year ago. Let's see, uh, there were some things mentioned on Facebook post I will have to share, uh, 'cause I know a lot of those negative, uh, Facebook posts are directed toward myself and you all as decision makers. And, uh, the one that I think I need to address most of all for the community, as Alderman said, is about golf carts. Yes, we have had to tighten down a little bit on golf carts and four-wheeler and side by side being driven by kids as young as nine years old that carry three or four riders. So if you have a golf cart and you have a driver's license or a side by side and you just putting around, just enjoying your little afternoon, the police are probably not gonna bother you. State trooper might if you get on the wrong road and Hardin County, eh, they may if you're on the wrong place. But for the city, uh, we certainly gotta take precaution on small children that do not know how to operate these apparatuses and they're running out in the street, running in front of everybody. So, yes, that was, um, a decision to give everybody a warning so that the police can tell them, hey, you gotta take your little self back home now. You can't be riding out there on the street, gonna get hurt. Uh, also, children, young teenagers and younger, riding certain thing without a helmet on. It's dangerous. And the city is not gonna be liable for one of these children or adults that get out here, turn a corner too sharp or whatever and hurt themselves and say the city is responsible. So that is one, okay? So that, uh, so people that like to come out of town and ride their four-wheelers on the street all night, we're not gonna have it, period. If you're an adult and you're behaving yourself like most people do, we don't really have that problem. Nobody's gonna really bother we too much, okay? So does that kind of help you a little bit, Alderman, about that decision? I know I talked to one or two of you about that. Also, the negative Nancy Facebook post out there, hey, it's politics, it's public office, it's government. Again, I bring up my thirty-some years' experience, it's nothing new to me. People are gonna be positive, people are gonna be negative. What your job is, is to make the best decision for the people in this town, regardless of friends, family and folk. So people aren't gonna like what you do a lot of times, but if you cannot stand up with a backbone, you don't need to be sitting in that chair. And so as two thousand and twenty-four comes around, we'll see who has the ability to sit in your seat or my seat, if they wanna run for office along with you and I, pony up, be it newcomer or longtime, veterans of South Tillo or new people. This town is growing bigger and bigger with all kinds of new people that are getting involved. We wanna keep our small-town atmosphere and small-town love, but we've got to have people to make decisions for this community and that is your role. So, uh, been there, understand it, not scared of it. So we're gonna do things appropriately and the right way for this community.
And quit reading it.
Sir?
Just quit reading it.
Yeah, that's right. Just ignore it. That's what you do. Just ignore it and move on. It is what it is. All right. Financial report, we've been going over that with both budgets and all. Alderman report, any reports from Alderman? Okay. All right. What about department's report? Ms., uh, uh, May, you got anything for senior citizen?
No.
All right. Uh, Mr. Jager, you anything for maintenance department? Okay. Uh, Mr. Turner, anything from BZA?
None.
Okay. All right. What about food bank? Uh, I did mention that the food bank is being operated on the second and fourth Thursday by Ms. Rose and Ms. Sheila. I'm trying to, you know, I got Ms. Sheila. So y'all have anything to present about food bank?
No, everything was.
Okay. All right. Yes, ma'am.
I was wondering though, can, can I go down there almost?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Oh, you call me and we'll work something else out.
Yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, could we help the seniors out in some of their practices?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. All right. Uh, the food bank, we have moved it to Main Street where the doctor's office was. That's another thing, that we don't have a prospective doctor right now. We still got a roof problem. We can't occupy that building with a doctor unless we get all that fixed. But in the meantime, we own that building, we pay for the electric and the utilities. So we're gonna use it to the best advantage for our community. And right now, that's the food bank. It may not be a food bank, food bank forever, but we're gonna use it until our supply from there. All right? So I don't see any other city folks, okay? All right. All right. So, um, no department. Okay. Uh, we're ready for, uh, citizens' comments, concerns, commendations, uh, anyone wishing to speak to the board, make sure you present it to the board and state your name and address. All right, go ahead.
Emily Mitchell, one sixty-five Main Street. Um, my, I guess my concern, we've spent a lot of time talking about safety at this meeting especially, wanting to bring new people into this community. When are we gonna get reliable EMS? When is it gonna be if someone has an accident that we have someone who can respond in fifteen minutes as opposed to forty-five minutes? If you, me, anyone here is having a heart attack or stroke or bleeding out, forty-five minutes is the difference between life and death. What are we as a community gonna do or what can we do to make it so that this community is safe in an emergency?
Yeah. That's a great question. I am not a professional that can answer that. Uh, our fire chief is sick tonight. He would be the one that needs to address the community and the board about those questions. I, I, I just don't have the knowledge to answer them.
Is it something, I mean, is it something that can be discussed?
Yeah.
Because I know I'm not the only one. I can't possibly be the only one that thinks that way. In a life or death situation, we don't have forty-five minutes to wait.
Well, I'm gonna say, I wanna say this as a comment. My husband got hurt, hit by a tree during the last storm that it came through, not this time, like last year or the year before, when those high winds came through and we were over here on Will Street. And he got hit by a tree when they were trying to cut it off of somebody's roof and it knocked him out. And I'm gonna tell you that somebody was in our, was at our house within five minutes from our town. We had three people. And I'm, I was very impressed. I got my husband the help he needed and ended up at the hospital, but, uh, I just can't say enough good things about what happened during that one. That's the only time, knock on wood, we've ever needed it, but it, it was very, we can.
I know we've had a family member, and this has been a little while ago, they thought he could be having a stroke and it was, what, one o'clock in the morning? It took forever for him to get.
So let me just share with you, I don't mean to cut you off and, and belabor the point, but here, here is the primary, I think, problem with having a part-time fire department. Now, of course, the county support that we have, Hardin County Fire Department, they are volunteers as well. So that is something I hope, as you mentioned, that when is the board gonna talk about it? Uh, it's, it's a lot of opportunities between now and the next few months to bring that up and, you know, I don't, I don't have an answer. I think what we need to do is, is have the fire chief tell us, all right, this is what we're doing, this is how we're doing, this is where I support them, this is what you expect the response time is, or we need to have other professionals to share with the board that, you know, to increase your response time, you need to do this, but I, I'm just not the person, okay? So, all right. I have to rely on those other experts. Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Ogden Turnbull, four five one two, Highway sixty-nine. I called nine-one-one and had somebody there. Ricky was there in like six minutes or less at help. And when he did everything he had to do, the ambulance was already outside.
Yeah, yeah. There you go. Okay. Appreciate Mr. Withers being on the spot when he needed it.
Now, we had a lady die in our church parking lot and nobody from the city showed up. So Ricky, when they called the county, that's the one that came out, but probably, I don't know, twelve minutes or so. So I agree, we need to discuss a plan. Now, I had an issue back last year and Kenny was there like that. So there are times it's great and there's times it's poor. So we gotta figure out a consistent plan.
Yeah. And, and like I said, that is a issue when you have a part-time fire chief and part-time department. And that, you know, and that is something that, I, you know, I, I agree with Ms. Mitchell, that it needs to be discussed when you think about it, uh, but we also have a part-time police department. Uh, but we also have a part-time police department. So there's a lot of things, when you talk about safety and growth and all those other things, like, and talking about decision-making by the board, there's a lot to decide in how to protect citizens and things like this. All right, anyone else?
Ricky Withers, fifty-one-thirty South Tillo Road. Uh, the statement was made a while ago that y'all are up here to vote the way you think is best for the city. Uh, total disagreement. You're here to vote the way the majority of the people that elected you want you to vote. It's not what you think personally. It's what the people that elected you do. And I think that's the way it ought to be, and I reminded you of that.
Okay, well said. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Yes, David Hart, one sixty-five Main Street. Uh, maybe I missed it, but what happened to the nepotism policy? It was...
We, we tabled it and haven't brought it back.
It was tabled for month after month after month, and they're not even brought up to be tabled again.
I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
Nepotism.
The nepotism policy.
I'm sorry, I didn't, couldn't hear.
Yeah, it was just tabled months on end, months on end, and never made it back to the agenda, you know? And I'm the one that decides the agenda. I mean, it just hadn't been brought back up, you know? Any additional? Hearing none, can we get a, a motion for an adjournment?
I'll make a motion. We adjourn.
Alderman Woods is, make a motion.
I'll say that.
All right, I'll, I believe it's time.